A couple of comments here. The meeting is being videotaped and Amy Dow, the Staff Member of the Month, is unable to attend, so we will have a double staff member presentation next month. Agenda adjustments? There is none? Okay, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance next.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the hearing until after the public hearing on the budget. Situ, made second by Hanson. Any objections? All in favor? Ananamous. Now, open the public hearing on the budget. Let's start out with Mr. Hickey.
Thank you. As you recall, my presentation last month doesn't warrant a total repeat. I would defer to any members of the public or members of the committee if people had any questions. What I would prefer to spend more time on is instead... Jim, are you okay to do this at this point by the end, or you want me to do it during my report later?
Whatever you'd like, Ben.
Okay. So, we were fortunate, Jim did some quick work. Prior around 1:00 this afternoon, the Governor's Fiscal '18 Budget was released. And as part of that, there is a portion of the budget where we get the Governor's perspective on what each community's Chapter 78 or each district's Chapter 78 entails and what the minimum contributions are. What I did mention at the end of the presentation last month is that despite me saying, "I'm proposing a budget to you that is an increase of 3.3 percent," that number is not relevant when one wants to ask about individual assessments. So, what Jim did after getting those numbers from the Governor's Budget, it was all preliminary, of course, it's just the beginning of the state budget process, we're a little ahead as we always are, is that we'll be able to give you tonight for the first time some projected preliminary assessments, which include, among other things, the state's formula minimum contribution, any amount that's above the minimum contribution, including operating costs, transportation and food service, capital and debt, and then offsetting those numbers by anything that has to do with non-resident tuition. So, those are the factors when we go to finance committees and advisory committees in the community. Those are the numbers that we will focus on. So, I'll let Jim talk about what the analysis he did and how the Governor's Budget reconciles with our numbers.
Thank you, Tom. In the handout tonight that I gave you with the orange banner across the top there with the preliminary assessments, we start with our budget from Fiscal '17, which was $12,455,356. The budget increase that's been proposed as part of the conference presentation is $464,860. So, again, the budget for Fiscal '2018 is $12,926. The revenue sources that we have coming in, Chapter 78, $4,301,030. An increase over the last year of about $54,000. So, we are realizing some increase in our Chapter 70 state aid through the release of the Governor's Budget today. The non-resident tuition, which again is money that we collect during this fiscal year, the FY '17 school year from our added district towns, has increased substantially over last year. So, there's a $318,750 number that will be used to offset the district towns' assessments for next year. Also, revenue sources, the regional transportation. Again, this is always a guessing game. It's always one of those political footballs that get, the first thing to get tossed out or reduced when the conference committees get at the Governor's Budget. But we're pretty confident based upon historical numbers that we've increased that regional transportation number to $355,000. So, overall, $4,974,780 will come from various sources, which leads pretty much to a number that we now have to go to our eight towns to ask for, and that number is, you know, $9,745,436. So, again, that's where the revenue equals the expenses, our audit of Bruce Norling is here. So, whenever our revenue equals our expenses and comes to zero, it's always a good thing because that's where the budget is planned. And on the front page is the assessment detail for our town that totals the $7,945,436. The second page is, Tom has gone through budget presentations in the past, it's just the way that the October 1st pupil counts, how they are integrated into the assessments and how the assessments are built. The yellow piece is three-year average of enrollment that are frozen from the 2007, 2008, 2009 years. So, those are the three years preceding, the debt that was incurred by the district for the roof and capital projects back then. The middle part is a three-year average for capital expenditures. That's averaged over the last prior three years. So, June, October '13, '14, and '15, those enrollment numbers are used to average out how much of our capital cost is allocated to each district town. And the final column is our, this current school year, the October 1st of 2016 enrollment numbers, which pretty much will be used to assess the towns based upon the other costs over the minimum, operating costs and so forth. As you can see, the final, at the end of the column, is a little bit of a map as far as the increases and decreases from the schools from last year. Third page is again the summary of the operating costs and the percentages. As you can see, for operating costs, Abington's going at 23.1 percent. For the debt service, Abington gets 21.93 percent. And for capital, Abington gets 24.75. So, every town, that's a different percentage of how the costs are allocated based upon the enrollment numbers that we just talked about. Next page is the big one, is how everything's being allocated amongst the towns and how the assessments are allocated based upon the minimum contribution. The first column, the FY '18 minimum contribution, is the numbers that were released today by the Governor's Budget. What happens is that there's a very complicated calculation that the state does with everybody, every regional town, every town in the state. All regional districts go through the same process. And what this minimum contribution is based upon, the town's ability to pay, it incorporates the real estate values of each member town, the income that is reported on the income taxes of the residents for each member town, and again, the ability to pay calculation that comes through. So, again, that minimum contribution is the base, the foundation that we start with. And then from there, we start allocating other costs and so forth across the columns between everything. The operating cost in the yellow, that includes transportation costs, less salary reimbursement, and also, it also includes some food service costs which are not funded. So, overall, we're going to be asking $7,945,436 from our member towns. And the final page is just a comparative assessment, where we were last year versus where we are this year. There are three member towns that their allocations will be decreasing because of the way that the enrollment and the assessments and the minimum contribution is calculated. And it'll be five towns that will have an increase in their assessments. Overall, our budget is going up by a total of, on the front page, $464,000. But we're only asking our member towns for $197,000 of that increase. So, overall, we've been using other revenue sources to fund these increases, so we're trying to keep the amount of increases of our towns to a minimum. If you remember, last year, we had, from the Fiscal '16 to the Fiscal '17 budget cycle, we had an increase of 30 students that came with the program into school. With those 30 students, we had a pretty significant increase in our Chapter 70 state aid. When we ran these numbers last year and we did this a year ago, we were only asking $10,000 from our member towns because we had so much increase in state aid that helped absorb our budget increases at that point. So, this year, we're asking $197,000 from our member towns. Total two-year average is a little over $100,000, which is pretty good. So, this is the assessments that are preliminary. If there's any changes up to the point in time that we can make changes, we will do that. You know, there could be some budget changes when, you know, from the government. Once it gets to the conference committee, that gets too close to June for us to really do anything, any major changes. But overall, this is the numbers that we've used in the past, and these are the numbers that we'll use when we visit the finance committees over the next six to eight weeks to let them know where the numbers are. So, any questions?
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Set Hanover and Cohasset. Any discussion? All in favor? Ananamous. We'll reopen the other meeting. Motion on the minutes for December 15th, 24th, and January 11th.
I'll make that motion over here.
Made by Situ. Second by Rockland. Any further discussion on those minutes? Seeing none? All in favor? Student of the Month, Kathryn Dano.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Kathryn Dano. Kathryn is the daughter of Gus and Beth, Kathryn from Abington, and she's a student in our Allied Health Program. She's working on a co-op right now, and she has already a certified CNA. She's an active member of our National Honor Society, Skills USA, and varsity volleyball team. And here's what her teachers have to say about her. Kathryn Dano consistently does outstanding work in all of her academic classes and in her allied health shop. She has a plan to continue her education in the medical field and has been working hard to make this come to fruition. She embodies the qualities of maturity and exuberance. Her pleasant demeanor and commitment to excellence make her a great candidate for Student of the Month. Kathryn loves her trade, and she plans to pursue a career in nursing at the University of Connecticut next year. We used to run a faculty recognizing Kathryn Dano as a student of the Month for January 2004. And some good stuff from FFBT.
Thank you. Thank you. What's a good word, please? Chair, student advisor council.
Recently, Student Council has rejoined the Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Council. Student Council launched a winter conference. At Quincy High School, there they were able to learn leadership skills and also listen to Davey Muse speak about his experiences and self-worth. We would also like to attend the spring conference in April. We plan on having a putting for patients event at the school Saturday, March 4th. We are moving into the advertising and signup phase now. If you know anyone that would like to attend, we welcome any willing to participate in the cause. Student Council is also currently selling carnations and chocolates at lunch. NHS is currently running depression letters in part of their efforts to raise awareness about physical and mental health. Every month, NHS will put forth an effort to help raise awareness for either physical or mental disease. They'll also be selling bracelets for heart disease awareness, and those proceeds will go to a cause related to the issue being made aware. BPA is also hosting a blood drive funded by the American Red Cross here at the school February 19th. Please talk to Mrs. Zavatsky if you or anyone you know would like to attend.
Thank you, Jim. Any comments on Jake's report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. I'd like to recognize the gentleman from Abington from the Finance Committee. Would you identify yourself for us, please?
Leggy Susadellis, Tom Abington, Vice Chair.
Thank you. If you have to review the budget, we've been through the public side, but if there are any questions, get back to the chairman. Jim here will be glad to help you out.
Thank you.
Reports, treasurer.
I had so many papers tonight. Okay. Treasurer's report through December, six months through the fiscal year. Tax position, again, things are good through the end of December, $3.5 million in the bank. Our ROPE account stands at $578,000. Things are looking very well. Page two is our revenue report. Again, the revenues for the month of December, a little bit of an issue with the date there, but Hanson was the only town that, the assessments that we sent out, most of them were collected in November. Hanson's just crossed the line. We received that in December, so the $219,000 was the only assessment we received. So, everybody cascaded, 50% of their assessments so far this fiscal year, so everybody's on track and doing well. Mislane is income down below. Again, our Chapter 70 money comes in on a regular basis monthly, $356,000 comes through. Our school aid, the public, the pupil transportation money that comes through the state, the budget for this year is $300,000. The payment did come in on January 12th. We received $220,000. Again, that's a calculation that we don't know our, our hard transportation money number for next year yet, though, in a little bit. But the fact that we received $220,000 as our first payment is a good sign that the reimbursement rate is pretty high. Last year was 73 percent, so, and in the past, we've budgeted low because that number changes as things go along. So, we're looking favorable on that budget amendment moving in, and that'll be reflected in next month's report. So, overall, we're doing well with the revenue side of everything. And the last page, page three, is the expenditures for the month. Everything is moving along as planned, not a lot of surprises. I've highlighted a couple of things in the expenditure column. One under line 11, leased equipment, $147,000. What happens is our, the bus leases, the bus lease program that we're under, we make one annual payment for the bus leases of $147,000, and that is made in December. So, that was that one line item for the bus lease payment that comes under the leased equipment. And down below, under line 35, the bond expense, again, similarly, we have, we pay $115,000 a year against the note that was taken out years ago for the roof repairs. So, that payment is also due in December, so we pay $115,000 of principal against that note. The other piece of it, 7691, is the interest that gets paid on the note. We pay our interest on that note twice a year as well. So, we paid $7,200. Now, we'll pay another $6,500 in June. So, other than that, there are no major expenditure issues. Again, Pat will be doing his, then doing the fabulous job keeping up with the paperwork that's flowing through the business office. As the cycles go through with vacation, school vacations and so forth, once the teachers get back from vacation, there's another rush to replenish what's left, what's needed in the classroom. So, there's been a lot of paperwork through on here, just saying they're doing a great job. And that's the Treasury report for our, if there's nothing else. Anybody have a question?
Seeing none, may I have a motion?
No.
By Whitman, second by Cohasset. Any further discussion? All in favor? Ananamous.
We do not have any budget transfers for tonight. Everything's in line, so there's no need for any transfer votes.
Any others?
No.
Chairman has nothing we did meet with on Subcommittee for Hull, and we've come up with some tentative figures, but we're not quite ready to call them out yet. It'll probably be next month. Subcommittee audit, report from Mr. Bruce Norling.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Bruce Norling. I'm the owner of the CPA firm that completed the annual audit for the year ended June 3016. And I'm going to give a brief report highlighting the audited financial statements and what we did. And then, of course, if there's any questions. The, our overall opinion on the financial statement was that it was a clean opinion. Everything was, we found everything in order, everything was materially stated correctly in the financial statements. But those are the numbers part. We also test the controls, internal controls and the policies and procedures of the organization. And the government auditing standards requires our firm to do that at a school district. And as Jim was saying, he has a small department, but a very good department. And so, we do look at the transactions that flow through the accounting, there's a lot that flows through, and we do a test, and we look at the procedures, and we found no exceptions. And again, find that the department's very conscientious about documentation of expenditures and also of making sure all the revenue is reported properly. So, I'm fairly pleased, very pleased to say that the internal controls are operating well, and I think that's very important. And the numbers are also, I thought, pretty strong. So, for example, I'm going to refer my financial statements here, but the organization has $3 million in cash, they have a current liability of $1 million at the June 30th, and the budget, which was not expected to fare as well as it did, they actually did better than the budget by about $200,000 approximately, better than the budget. So, that part of the organization is, I think, well-controlled, and I think pretty consistently the organization has come in very responsibly versus the budget over the years. And my report also includes a report on the internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. I do have to test that, our firm tested compliance with laws and regulations, primarily the state funds, and there are some federal funds kicked in. And again, I think that the organization's very compliant and conscientious with following all the documentation standards. So, I feel pretty comfortable. I also appreciate the help that Jim gives me and our staff and Tom as well, and very cordial. And so, I'm very happy, pleased with the way that the audit went and also the numbers looked very good.
Thank you. I have the recommendation of the Subcommittee.
In your package tonight, that I pointed out earlier was a letter from Bruce, he stated today, it's just a governance letter that basically according to the board, the committee of what they did, they've audited, they've tested, and they went through that they're required to, if they have any findings, that they report them to the committee, and there were no findings that kicked in. And dealing with Bruce has been tremendous. I've been here two and a half years, and in dealing with Bruce, I'm always on the search for the best Chinese restaurant in the Hanover area because when Bruce comes up, it's Chinese food. So, we find the best Chinese food, and until one year, we went to Squire's. And now, he doesn't want Chinese food anymore. He wants to go to Squire's. So, it's a little change of pace there, but we're dealing with it. I like the Chinese food, and then now we have to go to Squire's.
He's our guest, so.
Freedom accord.
Exactly. So, but things are going well, and they've been doing the audit for many, many years now, and they do a great job, so.
Thank you, Jim. Now, we're talking Subcommittee recommendations, whether we accept them before the audit.
Recommendation, a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Ananamous. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
See you next year.
Safe trip.
Safe trip.
Superintendent Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first, only a few items tonight. First item is to tell you that in your packet document seven, I provided you with a mid-cycle update on some evaluation goals that you approved for me back in September. There were five goals. First goal dealt with the further development and use of professional learning communities. I'm very pleased to report that the, our staff take great advantage of some pretty creative scheduling here, and our vocational and academic departments get to meet anywhere from 40 to 80 minutes per week. They are regularly visited by either the principal or the assistant principal that oversees their department. It keeps great professional conversations flowing. There are many initiatives, many mandates, many challenges that we have that can be discussed when there's enough time, and time is a precious resource. That initiative is going quite well. We've also set as a goal for me that accountability, of course, is important. We're always looking to improve in the high-stakes testing areas. We take a very close look at test results as we have for years. English and math and science departments. Our science department continues to look very closely at the challenge of vocabulary acquisition in biology. It, for many students, is a brand-new course, and there's a lot of material that has to be absorbed in a short amount of time. They are focusing strategies on vocabulary acquisition. Our English department continues to focus on the long composition and open response questions for high-stakes testing, integrating those skills into the classrooms, into the lessons that they teach. And I think that our most widespread initiative we've got underway is the implementation of an online math enrichment program called Study Island. We have our math department as well as all of our ninth-grade related teachers assigning additional math to assist students. It can be done conveniently online, and these assignments can be easily tracked by teachers. We have piloted this software for a few years, and we showed, we were able to show that it made a difference with students in terms of their success rates with MCAS. So, we continued, we've essentially taken that pilot and expanded it to a larger audience. Two of the goals that I set, I would, I'd have to update you on later in the year, one dealing with third-party credential, and we know how important it is for our graduates and our upperclassmen to get a third-party credential. A lot of that testing is done in the latter part of the year, and I have, I've said this to you in the past. So, that particular goal, I will bring back to you with an update later this year, hopefully telling you that a very high percentage issued for 100%, but that we would get as close to 100% as possible of the eligible students earning a third-party credential. They are served safe, certified in culinary arts, they have an OSHA credential, perhaps they passed an EPA test in HVAC, et cetera, et cetera, CNA testing in allied health. So, more on that later this spring. Similarly, my fourth goal dealt with increasing the number of students involved in work-based learning or cooperative education experiences. We currently have 40 students in the senior class who are out on co-op. That is, and we also have, I think, I think the last number I got was five students participating in internships. We all know that co-op is a full-time, shock-week compensated arrangement, the pinnacle of work-based learning experiences, total immersion. Internships are a lesser amount of time, perhaps one or two days a week. So, we've devoted more... So we've devoted more resources to this. This is something that was built into this budget, and I'll give you an update on, as we get into the third trimester, we will start to see eleventh graders begin to go out, and I'll give you an update on that later in the year. And my fifth goal dealt with district-determined measures, the educator evaluation system, and the use of student feedback in educator evaluation. There have been some changes at the state level where there are now proposed revisions to regulations governing essentially how do, how student test data is incorporated into educator evaluation. So that part of the goal needs to be put on hold until we figure out what's going on with the regulations. But I am in the process of working with the staff on language that would govern how we use student feedback, surveys, et cetera, as part of an evaluation system. And that's ultimately something that I would be bringing back to you for approval, but we're in the process of working on that as well, and I feel confident we will, we will come to some common ground on that. It's, it's good to get student feedback, but student feedback should not be tied to a teacher's evaluation. It is simply a data source. So we're working on that as well. So those are my, that's the, that's the score at halftime in terms of the, the mid-cycle update. Second item on my report deals with the Mass School Building Authority and Statement of Interest. I would not ask, I would not ask you to read this now, it's not necessary, but in your correspondence folder, you will find a few documents relative to the Mass School Building Authority. The document in yellow will tell you that we were not accepted into the program. A very nice letter saying that there are a lot of schools who are interested. My numbers tell me that eighty-nine statements of interest were submitted statewide from fifty-eight different school districts. Only seventeen of those projects were, were accepted. The priorities that, that the MSBA, limited by the amount of tax dollars they have to use, a penny on the sales tax, but the projects that they are prioritizing are ones in which the school districts are saying there is extreme overcrowding present, and number two is in serious health and safety issues. We could, we can claim neither of those. So I will be bringing back to you for the third time an opportunity to apply again. I hope to bring, the green paper in the correspondence folder will be the five-minute-long motion that maybe Bob Haywood will be asked to read again, which essentially says the school district through its school committee wants to submit a statement of interest. Bob, you've got three weeks to, to tag someone else. And then, and then the white document that follows that is the draft statement of interest. It is essentially unchanged. Our needs remain unchanged relative to renovations in the nineteen sixty-two building. Despite all of the successes we have on, of maintaining this building, there are certain things that just continue to age, as well as the issues that you all know quite well relative to the limited space we have for vocational programs and science labs and our weight room. The doc, the, the document behind that is a series of pictures that I submit along with the statement of interest as an extra appendix to show whomever is reading this that, just a visual of what we're, of what we're talking about here. Again, the, the pri, we, we, we as a school district are not going to artificially overcrowd this building. We are not going to bring in students and stuff them into programs where it is unsafe. So we will never be in a situation that overcrowding would be the reason that we would be putting in a statement of interest, and we will never let the building fall into disrepair. So my hope is that one day, there will be a sufficient prioritization and available resources to allow the MSBA to go deeper into the bullpen of statements of interest. Nevertheless, we'll continue to do that. So by giving you these document, these documents tonight, I'm not asking for any action tonight, but what I would like to do is place this on the February agenda, and I would submit this before the April eighth deadline. The document, it's been easier to write this now that we're just making, you know, as Bob Moore had made some adjustments for me, updating some of the facility facts, but essentially, it's a statement of interest that looks very similar to what you voted to, to have me submit last year. That's the, that is the update on MSBA and fiscal, for fiscal seventeen. Mr. Chairman, the next item is Administrator Reports. I had to ask whether our administrators have any updates since the last time we were together.
Good evening, everyone. My update for this evening is to say that I am very happy to say that exploratory has concluded, and all of our ninth graders have been placed in their shop for the upcoming three and a half years. They will all receive those tomorrow. We changed the way that we're doing that because if you get your first choice, you're very happy, but if you don't get your first choice, you might not be very happy. And so we have changed the way that we're giving out that information so that each student will receive it personally by either an administrator or a guidance counselor, and if they have concerns or questions, or somebody needs to call home, then they're going to do that right then. So that's going to take place tomorrow morning. The other thing that I would like to say is, even though Tom said we're not going to overcrowd the building, we are doing very well on applications. We are just about at three hundred applications so far, and, you know, we haven't started admissions yet. So we're doing very well on, on interest. Lots of kids are interested in coming. We're still the same size that we were, but we're, we're very pleased with that. So it's all looking very good.
And Margaret, the three hundred applications is earlier, we've hit three hundred applications earl, at this point in the calendar year, much earlier than we did.
Oh, much, much.
So there will be more coming in. We anticipate even more.
We do anticipate, we get them, we get them every day. With the online app, we get them literally morning, noon, and night, seven days a week.
Thank you, Margaret.
Looks good.
I have one request, I think maybe Tom's already asked you on it. Could you let us know for the Subcommittee for the Hull project to see just how many Hull students have applied as non-district students?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, for the, I, I also have a couple of textbooks and for the, from the science department for a second, a second review, and we have, we will have plans to purchase those at the very end of this fiscal year for the science department. And if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
If I could continue under new business. The item that I'd ask you support to accept as a donation to our graphic communications program, that's document nine, it is a Hamada eight-eight-five CDX press.
So. Martha?
Situitt.
Situitt?
Hanson.
Any further discussion? All in favor? In unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jack sounded just like Bob Mahoney then. Mr. Thayer, a job duty is now on the agenda.
Okay. Warrants twelve and thirteen, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
Just the one?
That's it. Let's hide something from you again.
Seconded by Whitman. Any further discussion? All in favor? In unanimous? Any requests for action? Seeing none. Mr. Salvucci.
I motion to adjourn with all due respect.
I'll second it.
All in favor? In unanimous? Thank you.